All right, I would like to call this Special Meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education to order. With that said, because it's a special meeting, I need to read the meeting notice. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code, notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the Southwest Licking Local School District Board of Education, Fairfield and Licking Counties, Ohio, is scheduled to be held on Thursday, June 26th at 6:00 PM. The special meeting will be held in the Southwest Licking Local School District Board Meeting Room, 927B, Patasko- South, 927B, South Street, Patasko, Ohio. This meeting is a reschedule of the June 19th regular board meeting. The purpose of the meeting for this is for general purposes including presentations, request to speak on agenda items, approval of minutes, financial consent calendar personnel, consent calendar personnel, personnel, business items, agreements, contracts, treasures items, and superintendent's items. I'd like to recognize everyone here tonight and everyone at home watching, and if you all would please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Zany.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here. A quorum is present, we shall continue, I need an adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, the agenda is adopted, we'll move on to presentations. I would like to invite up Mr. John Jarvis, and we're gonna actually have Ms. Spindler.
And Scott, Scott's gonna speak.
Is there a presentation first?
Yep, Scott's gonna speak first.
Okay. Awesome.
Go on up there, John.
Go on up, you're the center of attention!
It's my honor to say a few words about an outstanding teacher, an award-winning coach, and one of the best people I've ever known, John Jarvis. I've been lucky to have taught and coached alongside John for almost 30 years. In that time, we've had many, many opportunities to chat about everything. Over the last few weeks, we've had a number of opportunities to reminisce about our careers. John has been teaching at Watkins for 28 years, and has coached cross-country, track, indoor track, and swimming for a total of 85 seasons. You know, that's three seasons a year, plus one extra cross-country season, even before he was teaching here. This morning, on one of our mini-walks, being the geeks we are, we did math. We, between the classroom and the athletic field, we estimated that John has been involved and had an impact on about 8,500 young people. As I talk with John's former students and athletes about his pending retirement, a few of the words they use to describe him are smart, caring, thoughtful, focused, driven, tough, but the word they use most often, and I hear most often, is just nice. He's a nice person. You know, I can't tell you how often I've heard kids say, "I love Jarvis." You know, I don't think there's any higher praise for an educator than those three words. Can I get to page two? You know, I know John feels the same way about his kids. He's always going above and beyond to help them succeed. You know, let me give you a recent example of how much he cares about them. This past weekend, John drove 15 hours and spent two and a half days at a track meet in Philadelphia to watch his athletes race. Their races lasted five minutes total. Not one race, all the races were five minutes total. When asked why we did this, his response was, "I wanted to let them know just how much I appreciate how hard they work, and that I'll do anything for them." I think that sums up John in one sentence. It said when the, it is said that when we leave, we are all replaceable. While another teacher may be in John's classroom next year, Watkins Memorial will be hard-pressed to ever replace him. In closing, I'd just like to say congratulations on your retirement, John. I'm looking forward to many more years of golf, walks, and talks. Congratulations. Thank you.
Even though this is typically what the board president does, I asked for special permission. Since I have known John Jarvis for, I did the math too today, 15 years ago, this June is when I first met Coach Jarvis, when he coached my now 23-year-old in her first season of Patasko Porpoises Swim Team, and then proceeded to coach my other two children in cross-country and track. He has never taught my kids in the classroom, but my kids do love Jarvis, and so do I, and on behalf of the board, congratulations.
I think Dan's gonna get your guys' picture too.
Oh.
But not like in front of me, like over there. You don't want me in the background, but just you two.
Do you want your wife carrying?
Oh yeah, yes, your wife should be allowed to. Yes. And Scott, put Scott in there too. Yeah, Scott, that's good.
Sure.
Yeah, anybody who wanted it, John, it's your picture.
You certainly earned it.
Aw.
Oh yeah, sure.
Next week, they said. You can, you can say whatever you'd like.
Yes, by all means.
Please, yeah.
Maybe. Thank you, all of you. It's been fun. It's one, as an educator, I always feel that, you know, relationships are key, and hopefully we've, we've all built some here. And it's, it's been, like you said, it's been fun. You know, this district has grown incredibly, but kudos to you all for keeping it feeling like a family, in a district that, you know, we raised our kids, man, we raised our kids in, and we raised a lot of other kids in. And thank you all for the opportunity. So, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. All right, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters, Southwest Licking Education Association. Thank you, all right. And our meeting's going to continue, but you all are free to go as you wish. And while everyone's fleeing, we get to entertain some approval of minutes. Someone like to motion.
Motion 4A through C, second.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, those are approved, we'll move on to the report from the treasurer. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, 5A.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
Cleared on agenda, executive session, executive summary for May 31st, doing very well. Our revenue is about 2% higher than we expected, and our expenditures are about 5% lower than we expected. Part of the expenditures has a lot to do with the, with the construction project, which are coming through, but overall, we're doing it really well. So basically, we're doing well. Kind of a key, real quick, about the state budget that was approved by the House, Senate, waiting for Governor Dewine's signature, and then kind of the biggest things that affected us is they did vote to put emergency levies, substitute levies, into the calculation for the 20 mil four, which is gonna hurt us. I mean, it's gonna, any future growth, we'll get it for new construction only increases, but other than that, revaluation, re-appraisal, basically, eventually that emergency operating levy, so it's actually over $5 million, will just get, you know, taken into a 20 mil four, and we'll be at the same place we were before it was put in place. It's definitely not a good thing for schools, it will help taxpayers, but it's not gonna be a big relief. Again, it's gonna take six, nine years for it to finally get rolled back into, back to 20 mil four, but it's still gonna hurt. So it's something we definitely gotta keep into account, you know, basically, it does affect our five-year forecast significantly, so we do have to watch what we're spending, you know, exactly by FYI from year 2029 budget. We went from negative cash flow of $4 million to 8.8 million. So that's, that's huge, that we have to overcome, so we're gonna have to figure out, really, we're gonna need to start basically tightening down our belts, keeping things in check as much as we can, you know.
Even Dr. Perkins and I talked about, you know, we had 10 teachers in the forecast for growth, and we're gonna take that down to five.
Try to do things, try to, wherever we can, save, and then, you know, it's inevitable we're gonna need no levy. So it's, so unfortunately, we had a permanent substitute that's gonna be worthless here in a few years, and we're gonna go back to voters again, saying, we need no levy, either a property tax or income tax, we're gonna need something within the next three to five years. There's just no doubt, we can't keep sustaining where we're going, because we're growing. It's kinda hard to say I'm not gonna hire teachers when we have kids coming in our doors. So that's, that's really the biggest thing, you know, there's still kind of unpacking it, and we gotta see what the governor vetoes, and what the House and Senate override, to really get a full picture of what's going on. So there's still a lot up in the air, a lot of not understanding how things work, but so, that's the biggest thing I saw off the top of my, that's gonna hurt us.
I think it's important to say that our constituents voted for that.
They did.
With the knowledge that there would be no additional levies, and they took that out of our voter's hands.
Exactly. No better way to say it.
Local control.
Right.
Overruled local control.
Yep.
That, you know, we're trusted with local control, and we're even told that they believe in smaller government and local control. Well, sadly, the actions don't match the words.
Nope, it's a lie.
Anybody else? All right, well, let's vote on this.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that's approved. Let's move on to the personnel consent calendar. I think we could probably take all of them.
Motion to approve 6A through L, second.
The only thing I really wanted to point out was that we did hire our second new assistant principal to replace Travis, who bumped up to the principal. She is another principal coming from Pickerington, coming over here to be an assistant principal. She's the highest certification with OG, has a background in special education, so has three years assistant principal experience, so we feel really lucky to have her joining our team. And otherwise than that, everything else is pretty, pretty routine.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that is approved, we'll move on to business items. At least the first one I'd like to take individually, but, so we can just go through.
So, motion to approve 7A, second.
So, I know you guys have all the proposed handbook changes.
Yep.
I'm welcome, I can take any questions myself between Tan and I, any questions you might have, or anything you wanna discuss as well.
Okay. I did bring some concerns up to Casey and Melissa over the last week or so about some of these, and I thought it might be healthy to have a board discussion on some of them, just to kind of see where the board is with this, because I know where I am with this, but I'm one of five. So, if you guys wanna open up the, the first document, proposed changes to the handbook, at the bottom of page three, it's the last one that says cafeteria rules. So, what I explained to them, the wording, it says, "When necessary, packed lunches from home can be dropped off for students in the office, but fast food deliveries and any other food deliveries from restaurants are not allowed." So, that, in my mind, consists of quite a few dynamics. So, the first one that I generally come to is like Uber Eats or any of those delivery services. And obviously, that is a no. I mean, I, that is disruptive, I, that's not my issue, but, but what this says is, parents cannot bring in fast food for their students. And I personally feel like that is taking away a parent, a parent's decision. My kid has a birthday, I should be able to bring them McDonald's if I want to, and this kind of excludes that, and I-
I don't read it that way at all.
Well, I asked Casey, and that's exactly-
That is obvious.
No, you're fine.
I was just, as a polit-, someone that writes policy, there's a, like a verb missing, so, okay, I misunderstood, so.
So, my concern is then, would this also preclude teachers from bringing in pizza for their class, or, let's say they have a reward, could they not bring in McDonald's for their students?
For the parents, or?
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
I didn't, are you asking me if the parents could bring in McDonald's for the class, or are you talking about the teachers bringing in?
No, 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 I'm saying, if I, as a parent, can't bring McDonald's for my student, could I, as a teacher, bring in McDonald's as a reward for one of my students?
For, I mean, I'm not sure if that even happens anymore, where one student would get McDonald's, but, I mean, as a class incentive, like, for sure, I think there's a, a little bit of, a, in my opinion, and what I had kinda expressed to John, just for the transparency of the full board, I had, I agree with what's been presented by the principals, and here's what I told John, I said, you know, first of all, if a student forgets their lunch, like, let's say the parent doesn't bring it, whatever, the parent, A, can drop off the packed lunch, and/or we will give them a lunch for free, we will make sure they're, they're eating, we don't do the old cheese sandwich anymore, we got rid of that years ago. And when we, at our elementary schools, we have one, one secretary, and I, I don't think it's their job to be delivering McDonald's to kids, and I think when we, you know, when we talk about the teachers and like the pizza parties, I think those are few and far between, and their rewards, like a privilege that a teacher has. We don't, we don't want, I mean, I hate to say this to sound unkind, but we don't want parents dropping off lunch for every student's birthday in a building of South Fork with 650 kids, that's a nightmare, we do not want that. So I, the elementary principals wanted this in here, and I said, I do support this, and I would, you know, we could discuss it as a board, but that's kind of where I was coming from. I don't think it's, I, I respect what John's saying, taking away from parents, but I feel like, you know, school is not the place for McDonald's, and school lunch or pack your lunch, I don't know, that's, that's just how I feel about, feel about it.
And I totally respect that.
Right.
I just, and I told you we would have this discussion tonight. I just feel like, as a parent, I should have a right to bring my kid whatever food I wanted to bring him, and that, I mean, and also what would stop me from, well, I don't know, if I put it in the bag for the kid.
That's what I would do.
That's what I was gonna say, I think, I think that's the bigger issue, is, I don't think it's the food that you're necessarily against bringing in, I think it's the issue of purposely not, yes, exactly, the perp-, no, you're all right, but that's it, purposely not sending your kid with a lunch, and then you coming in to drop it off later, i.e. then bring, interrupting the secretary, the classroom, you know, all of those things. So I think if you, I mean, put whatever you want in the sack lunch at the beginning of the day, what be it, you know, sushi, spaghetti, you know, whatever, but, but if you purpose, if you purposely don't send a lunch with your kid to school, I think that's not a good decision. That's the piece that I think, I think that, you know, if your kid forgets their lunch, and, well, you know, we're not gonna let him starve, we'll have something for them there, or you can drop off something, a packed lunch, but let's not encourage you to forget your lunch and then bring something in, that's-
Yeah, and I respect this whole debate. I, to me, it just boils down to parental rights, and I feel as a parent, if I wanna bring my kid something for lunch, I should be able to. And then, also, within this, this isn't highlighted, but this was part of the policy, according to district wellness policy, students are not permitted to bring soda or energy drinks. These items may be discarded if brought to school. So now, if a parent sends a soda, the school can dump it out? I mean, to me, that is, again, that is taking away my choice as a parent, to be able to provide that for my kid.
But our district has specific health and wellness policy that prohibits, well, like already in existence, that prohibits energy drinks and sodas.
I do sort of understand that too, but I also know, high school, we have soda in the vending machine.
But this is the elementary.
But not during the day. Yeah, they're not turned on during the day.
You can't get the vending machines on during the day, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know, it, to me, this is just taking away parental choice for their kid, and I don't like it, so I just wanted to bring that up.
And I, I've never, I've never been an elementary teacher, I was a high school teacher, I give them all the credit in the world, and I, I feel as if they may lose their mind if they had a bunch of elementary kids drinking energy drinks in the afternoon, and they're gonna be on their hands, so I just, that's what I told John, I can't, I can't do that to them, so that's why I supported what they put in, not, you know, I understand where John's coming from.
Not that I'm 100% for what the American Academy of Pediatrics says, but, all the time, but in this particular case, I think they strongly discourage every 18 and under not to drink energy drinks due to the heart health issues, the risk of heart attacks, basically, with kids overdoing on those, so.
But like, if a kid brings a Sprite, is that horrible? There's no, you know, and then we have the right to pour it down the drain?
I don't know, I mean, the kid, you know, that's-
That's just my concern.
It's, you know, not my, listen, my kids didn't drink soda until they went to, the one went to college, so yes, in my house, sodas are a problem, so.
And then, the other piece that, that I wanted to discuss, or that I brought up with Casey and Melissa, I just have to find it here, because I didn't have my email up, is the, the high school also deals with food.
Is it in the proposed changes still?
Yeah, it's something that's been taken out, but I can't, I didn't bring my email up. Oh, here we are, page 13, in the red that's been taken out, parents are welcome to have lunch with their students in the cafeteria, they are not permitted to bring siblings. So, again, I don't know in what world any high school kid would want their parent to come sit down and have lunch with them in a cafeteria, I totally get and respect that, but again, now we're intentionally taking out parents, essentially taking out, if I wanted, as a parent, to come have lunch with my kid, not that I ever would, but if I wanted to, now I can't. And this has been policy, and now it's being ta-, I don't know, everything dealing with cafeteria and food seemed very unfriendly to me with these changes, and I just didn't like, and I wanted to bring it up, so.
So also, as a parent, I would feel uncomfortable with somebody else's parent that I don't know hanging out in the cafeteria, so I understand the safety portion of that. Also, I don't, don't understand why a parent couldn't sign their child out and take them to lunch.
Right.
That's what I said.
And I, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate, because I understand where you're coming from, John, I really do, I'm just, I'm playing the other side of the coin.
How, and how would we know if they were background-checked or cleared, and, or weren't, and something happened?
And I totally get it.
Yeah.
And respect that.
And I, I'm also, as a parent, I'm not trying to eat cafeteria food, if I can't bring in my fast food stuff, then I'm not gonna.
Come on now, we really eat.
The turkey, the turkey's dinner is good.
It does look really good, I'm not gonna lie.
Of course, Cindy is, but we, it looks good a lot of the time, so.
So, that was, just, no, go ahead, I was just closing, that was the point I wanted to bring.
I did say they could take them out to lunch, and the other thing I said too, like, listen, you know, we're getting to a place, our buildings are large, there's a lot of kids, I just feel like that's a one more layer of something extra for admins, teachers, monitors, like, I just don't feel like it's necessary, and if the parent truly, it's their birthday, they wanna come, well then, sign them out, that's your right, take them to Chipotle, whatever you wanna do, like, no one is saying you can't do that, you know, and so I just felt like that's a little bit more appropriate, and I think that when, when the principals bring these things to the handbooks, you know, there's reasoning behind that, and so that's why I said to John, I, you know, was supporting what they put in there, and we could talk about it.
Anybody else have any discussion?
Yeah, I, I actually worked on the language for FERPA, because I thought we needed to bump it up a little bit, we all know that there's a parent that wants somebody's personal address, an email address.
Is that a proposed change, or is that in a?
Yeah, it's in the proposed change, it's like one of the very first ones.
Yeah, it's on the first page, under updated, it's the, the changes that Depp proposed that were modified by legal, they're not highlighted, but they're in the updated language.
It's under updated.
Yeah, and she can, she can share some things if she wants.
Yeah, I, like I said, I just wanted to bump it up a little bit, to make sure that, now maybe we add a little, I just lost everything, that the safety of the kids are at hand, and we're not just going to-
Willy-nilly, fling them out?
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to think of anything else that I really wanted to hit on.
Take your time.
Yeah. That's pretty good. There was one other thing that I wanted to check, that I thought about when I was sitting here. Under the, the part where we say these are our, our symbols, our colors, or that sort of thing, and you have to get permission, is there anything in there that talks about legal-wise, that will pursue legal ramifications, if it's?
Oh, you mean, not in here, you mean just in the handbook in general?
Yes, 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 yes.
I do not know without looking, but if it's not, that's a modification we can make, that's a slight change?
Yep.
Okay, so we can do that, that's a good idea.
Which handbook would that be in?
I think it's in all of them.
Should be in all of them, yeah. Yep, we can, we can easily add like a, just a one-sentence little disclaimer.
Yeah, that was all I had.
Anybody else?
Oh, here it is, page 51.
No.
Now, I know under 7A, we have all of these, would it be possible to vote on the elementary and the high school separate?
You can request a workout, so, yeah. Just make a, are they okay with the friendly amendment, or do you wanna do it, or just separately?
So, I will offer a friendly amendment, that we vote on the elementary and the high school handbook together, and then all the other handbooks collectively.
Do we need another second, or are we still under friendly?
They'll probably be okay to have a second, I guess, if it's a friendly amendment, you're okay, yeah.
Even the second stands.
No, yeah, okay. So you're just kinda, you're moving it to vote on those two, so a second to actually vote on them.
Okay. So, the first vote then will be on elementary and high school?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we get a second.
Second?
All right, so we are now voting on the elementary and the high school handbooks.
Okay.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
No.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
And now we're voting on the rest of them that are under this 7A.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zany.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that's been approved, we can now move on to the rest of these.
Motion 7B through P.
P, thank you.
You're welcome. Second.
All right.
Okay, we'll just kinda run down them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so B is addendum to the high school course description guide, changing the AP Physics 1 to algebra-based, to broaden that course, to have an opportunity for more students to take it, it talks about the rationale why, if anyone has any questions on that. The bucket truck, do you have any comments?
C is the bucket truck, the one we have now was 1995, and the cost to repair it was considerable, so it was requested to be purchased, still a used one, but a more modern used one, more modern one.
2015?
2015, that's 20 years newer, I'm just saying.
30 years newer.
I don't know if much of it works, because I know that-
I didn't know if it had trade-in value.
No, it didn't have any trade-in.
It's an antique.
We can-
We can get one of the historic license plates.
I mean, I was barely out of high school.
Yeah, it's very, I was surprised.
That's hysterical.
Yes.
So I guess we got our money's worth, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes, yes.
D is a policy for first reading and temporary adoption. So this policy was actually on last month for first reading, but then they made, must be made changes again to the policy, so we're bringing it back for first reading and temporary adoption. And the changes, as you can see, are highlight, highlighted throughout the sample policy in green. It's nothing significantly life-altering, but again, and it has to be adopted by July, which is why we have to move in this mind frame. And then policies for second reading and adoption, I believe Mr. Tancheski covered those last month. We have a cross-country course, a cross-country trip to Bowling Green in August, no missed school. We have two cheerleading trips over the summer in July and one beginning of August. Our annual DC trip is on the agenda. And then I wanted to talk about the mascot. Why are you looking at me like that, Rick?
I'm just looking.
Okay, did I forget something?
I'm anxious.
So we, there were two mascot presentations, and I have a staff member and a student eagerly awaiting a decision on the mascot. So we've had conversations, some reflection, talked to, you know, some other individuals, and kind of wanted to bring back three kind of cumulative ideas and see if we could get some consensus tonight as a board. The idea would be if the board likes one of these kind of three ideas, then we can move forward with Erin being our advisor. Again, she was a college mascot, so I think that would be great. We actually, I don't know if she said this when she presented, but we actually have another teacher coming here from Bowling Green who is also a BG mascot, who's going to be at the high school. So regardless, we have two mascots who will be working in the district. And then she could work with those, you know, starting to kick things out for the high school for tryouts for that position, as well as allowing Asher Kellett, who brought forth the initial proposal, to fulfill that role at the middle school, which I think would be great. So in no particular order and in no particular reason, I'm just going to throw these three out and see if anything sounds great or sticks with everybody. The idea would be we could, if we wanted to have a little bit of honoring the previous mascot, we could call any and all of these Willie, if you chose, or whatever name you want, but that's just an idea. So the three that we've kind of narrowed it down to, sticking in line with the theme of more of the animal than the actual person. So we have the Watkins Golden Eagle. So that's a native bird to Ohio, gold like the warriors. The Warhawk Warrior, which is similar to what Erin shared, also native to Ohio, symbol of strength, which is kind of cool. And then the Redtail Warrior, which is also native to Ohio, and it's also sacred in many Native American cultures. So that could be something to, to honor individuals if we chose. So Watkins Golden Eagle, Warhawk Warrior, Redtail Warrior, they can all be called Willie or anything you choose, but if we could pick one or something else and just get a decision so we can kind of move forward, that would be fantastic.
The only, I don't really have an overwhelming preference on this, on the animals. I just don't want us to become the Eagles, the Warhawks. That's my fear. So I don't want us to be the Watkins Warhawks or the Watkins Eagles. That's just the only concern that I have with moving to the bird. But I don't, I liked the idea of the Warhawk that was presented earlier. I also like the idea that there's one that's called the Redtail Warrior. So I don't have an overwhelming...
I'm more inclined for probably the Red Hawk Warrior.
The Redtail or the Warhawk?
Warhawk, Warhawk.
Warhawk or Redtail?
I didn't get it out. The Redtail Warrior is probably what I'm more inclined with. I'm not a super fan of the Warhawk. I like that the Redtail Warrior, it has the name Warrior in it.
You're right, it doesn't have the Warhawk.
And I don't know, I just, I wasn't a big fan of the Warhawk. I was just...
I feel like the Golden Eagle sounds like somebody else's local plate. Is this where somebody is?
It's actually Aetna's.
No, no, I know they're eagles, but I mean, the golden something is somebody else's, too, like local, right?
Would it be helpful to decide if Dan made some noises for each mascot?
That's right.
I did ask him to do so. I noticed he's awfully quiet.
I would want a red-tailed eagle, red-tailed.
That was the golden.
I think, yeah.
So what's it, red-tailed?
Redtail Warrior, Golden Eagle, or the Warhawk.
No, I think I like the red-tailed warrior.
I think the Golden Eagle is, I went the Aetna way, a direction because they actually have that award every, the weekly, the Aetna Golden Warriors.
That's right, that's right.
But, I mean, they're still part of our district.
No, no, no.
Is this something that, if we went with this Red Hawk Warrior, is that something that would be, I'm horrified. This is something that could easily be made into?
Yes, just so we're all on the same page. The, technically, it's a red-tailed hawk, but we're turning it into a red-tailed warrior.
Right, that's fine.
So red-tailed warrior. So, yeah, we would get those costumes and, yeah.
And they would wear a shirt that says Warriors on it?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And I think that if we wanted to call, at least the high school...
That was my suggestion. I sent it in an email.
High School One Willie, we can maybe pick a different name. They can all be Willie's, whatever.
People keep saying, let's bring back Willie the Warrior. Why would we name it Wyatt or, you know?
Willamina?
Sure, but it gives the nod back to bringing back the orig... I mean, but I don't actually, I'm not going to die on that hill either.
Naming it Willie?
Yeah.
No, I think we should. That's personally, I think we should, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we could get, we could be the Redtail Warriors, we could get the outfits, and then I could give, you know, let Erin know it's a go, and she could begin to plan for how we can disseminate information out to our high school kids so we can have tryouts in the beginning of the year, because it'd be super awesome to kick that off when football season starts. And I don't know all of what's involved with mascot training, but, you know, she would know what she's doing, so, because she's done it before.
You just got to give a megaphone. That was the biggest tool I had.
A megaphone?
As a mega, like one of those little electronic guys.
Yeah, whatever, you know, whatever works, but, or...
The turkey vulture.
But I do think Willie is respectful historically of what's been going on here, so.
So does everybody feel good with the Redtail Warrior?
Roger?
Roger, all right. We don't need to vote on that, do we, Rick? Well, we'll just put it all together with everyone. Vote on all, just vote on them all together.
Yeah, that's what, that's how it's moved, yes.
And then, oh, there's, sorry, then the textbooks. I believe that's all been shared and communicated through Melissa, but if you have any specific questions that weren't covered, Tan and I can try to answer them. Do you want to talk about L?
Yeah, L and M are combined together. Went out and got insurance quotes for our property liability and fleet. High school plan came in with basically the lowest cost with better deductibles and actually better coverage than what we've had. So the insurance, then we got a little better cybersecurity insurance plan along with it. Our old plan was only about $100, and this is up to $1 million in coverage, so it's definitely worth it. There's, high school plan is only schools. There's, I think, 350-some schools in it, and then some big ones to come in, like Olin Tangi and stuff, so it's, it's very good insurance. So we got, they're asking us to approve this acknowledgement of membership along with the fleet property and liability insurance and cyber.
So, oh, sorry, do you guys have any questions on that before we move on? So before Rick kind of discusses N O and P, I just wanted to share, so, again, to touch on B what, Rick?
It's a QRS.
Oh. So Rick and I, again, met this morning to discuss the proposed, you know, budget that's come out at this point, obviously pending the governor. So, you know, we're at a pretty tight timeline, which we discussed before, for potentially putting the bond back on in the fall, which, again, we are out of classroom space at two, almost three buildings, so the necessity is there. So he's going to share it tonight, and we can move forward with these resolutions, understanding that we're waiting to finalize things once the governor signs off. We'll be meeting again as soon as that happens. We'll take a look at all the budget stuff. We'll be looking at, you know, when, again, he gave you a timeline of three to five years to go back to the voters, you know, how does that impact putting a bond on? So, you know, today, in this moment, we feel confident-ish putting it on here that we need to do that. Things may change depending on what comes out from the governor, so we just want to make sure everyone understands that moving forward, that we may have to say something different at the July meeting coming up. Okay, go ahead, Rick.
So N O and P are three resolutions we have proved in the past. Really, the only determination is the dollar amount. So there's two different dollar amounts. Our municipal advisor wants to make sure we do it in $5,000 increments, because that's how you sell bonds, is $5,000, so. So basically, the first option is $95,335,000. That's for everything. We originally talked about without the spear in Aqua Center, but also includes an auxiliary gym at the new 56 building. And the other cost is $90,420, and the only difference is no auxiliary gym. So, you know, nearly a $5 million savings to do without. I've included in the attachment on the public a ballpark on millage rates. So basically, based on now, the 95, 335 would be approximately 3.49 mils. We were 4.2.
Yep.
We don't have one exactly for $90 million, so it would be somewhere between 3.3 and 3.5 probably mils. So obviously, there is a little bit of a millage savings. Not a huge number, but there is a little bit of a millage savings. I'm talking about maybe only about $10 difference.
Right.
There's not a whole lot of difference money-wise. But maybe it's easier sale, I don't know. You know, 122 for $100,000 valuation versus 116, 117. So it's only about a $6 difference per $100,000 valuation per year.
Per year.
Per year.
I'm fine with the aux gym.
Yeah, that's what, for that, for something we're going to end up having to build later on, and it'll be more money and et cetera, I just can't imagine. I don't, I don't know that that's a make or break, 122 versus 119 or 115. I think it is either a yes, we're going to do this, or you're not interested in it at all.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
So somebody making a motion on that? Oh, it's all right, a motion, but I guess the 95...
Do you need a separate motion for the 95?
No, just, I guess, everybody agree with the 95, 335.
I still feel like we need to do the one gym, because that is, what I heard from people was, we just need to ask for what we absolutely need, and that is asking for what we absolutely need. I think we could make up for that gym and other space with things down the future, but with what's going on with the state, to me, even though monetarily, dollar-wise, it's not a huge difference, I think it is important to also reflect the fact that this is basically the basics of what we need. And I think we would be able, as a district, to get by without having that extra gym. Is that an accurate statement, in your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do have inherited an additional gym with the South Fork and keeping Potasca Elementary. We're actually being able to allow Special Olympics to use Potasca Elementary this year, which is really, really nice. And so, and then we would be gaining still yet another gym. So we will, we will have additional gym space if we, you know, if we want to wait until down the road, when maybe we do get to bring a field house on. We do have additional, I mean, John is not wrong in what he's saying, so I can see both ways. If we take that out and we go with the one gym, you know, that, that literally is, here we are, to our voters, to our taxpayers, this is literally what we need, what you said you wanted.
I can get behind that, too. I'm kind of torn.
So.
So, where's Devin?
No, I'm still with the 95. I, the, I think that the voters are going to eventually get tired of us constantly coming back. Why didn't you build the gym in the first place, when it was cheaper?
We tried.
Yeah, that's, you know, just the way building costs are going up, and we have, you know, we've tried not to, tried to be conservative enough, but yet allow for growth in everything else we've built recently, and so it's just, and I know we're in a, we may be in a different financial situation in the next several years, but it's still, it pains me to not do the right thing, or at least ask for, you know, we want our kids to have the best, period. So, and for me, that's including that, that extra space if our youth sports need to use it.
I think we need a motion. I think the best way to do it is going to be through a motion.
Legislatively, what?
I think right now, just somebody needs to move a motion for the dollar amount.
And then if that is approved, then whatever that number is, is what the total thing will be voted on, right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Anybody wants to move a dollar amount?
Yeah, I'll move the 95 million.
I'll second that.
Anybody else? Roger, anybody? And we are just voting on the dollar.
Oh, we're doing the dollar amount, not the whole thing, just the dollar amount only.
Fair enough. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zini.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
No. All right.
All right, so that's been settled, so basically, N O and P will all, will be the $95,335,000 in those spaces, where there's two numbers. So any other questions about those?
No.
I think that completes everything, then.
Voting on the whole package.
The whole package now.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zini.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that is approved. We'll move on to agreements and contracts.
Motion 8A through L. Second.
Let me kind of go a little bit out of order and cover the simple ones, and then I'll allow you to ask any questions you might have to Dan if you have any, but obviously, DocuSign is just an annual renewal of, we utilize to sign all documents in the district. And then down to K, that's our pizza agreements with the food service.
I do, I had a question, and I apologize for not asking of this of Cindy earlier. The, a couple of the pizza providers aren't able to do their pizza gluten-free. Does that mean that that particular building doesn't have that option on pizza day?
I do not know, but I can find out.
I'm sorry, I should, I saw that and I should have asked that question.
That's okay, we can find out.
Okay.
I would imagine there's got to be some sort of...
Yeah, maybe they do a couple of different ones.
Maybe they do a different...
That's what I wondered. You could check on that. That just made me, that just...
Yeah, I don't know that.
Like gluten-free children's hearts, that made it, you know, it's kind of sad, so.
Yep, we can find, we can find out for you on that. And then the asphalt repair contract, obviously, we explained, I'm sure we talked about last month, too, the BB and wrecking bid, that this is an increase to the bid, but to finish the paving job that...
Well, it's just basically, we seal all the void away, the high school parking lots, and do a repair at ELC where the dumpsters are. It's starting to fall apart. So the alternate is to really tear it up and make it heavy-duty, that area right there, because it's not right now. The parent bid was the lowest one.
And then the rest are outside placements or agreements with, if you guys have any questions on those with Dan, I don't, probably feel like we need to go through individually, but...
I was just happy to see Cap Guado's under the pizza agreement. I thought that was a big...
Back to pizza.
Yeah, back to pizza. All roads lead back to pizza. Yeah, back to pizza, all roads lead back to pizza.
I was going to ask Dan a question.
Sure. Dan, get on up there.
It's a, it's a real simple one, are all of these seats that are already, like, we already have placements for, or are some of them, like?
So we have two seats at Phoenix we're holding, because our current bridge program doesn't service the younger grade for behavior yet.
Okay.
So that's the only two that we have that aren't filled.
Okay.
So most of these, so like the I am boundless one, is a student who's been attending there for six years, parents don't want to disrupt, which we completely respect. Our reach one is, and that's actually the summer one, but we will have, we'll be going down from, I think it's seven, down to two students, and then potentially down to one, and that one student is a senior next year. And so, one of our things we were trying to do is, one of our big placement areas is kind of the Sawmill Road area on 270, there's three placements we use there, and that bus is the biggest, the biggest issue, so it's a big time and for kids, and then expense, obviously, for the district. So we think we've got it worked out to where we are going to be able to eliminate that bus route this year for, for those placements, because we've completely eliminated two out of the three placements, and then have what we hope to be is one student left there, and then he'll graduate next year. But we are kind of thinking about a car instead of a bus, we can get it down to one student there and bring that bus back into the district to support existing routes. Phoenix, we kind of talked about already, and then Mecha-Diety Learning is, again, serving some age groups that we don't quite serve yet at the bridge.
Okay.
That was, that was exactly my question. Are we working to, to get them back in, but not necessarily to push kids out of where they're already at?
Absolutely, we've had some kids, and we really respected family choice for those, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, those are approved, we'll move on to treasures items.
Motion to approve 9A through E and our donations with many thanks.
Second.
So we have included donations, obviously, we appreciate those. B is resolutions for advancement or allow us to get, you know, advancements on property tax collections, so we get the money in our bank and invest it sooner, we have to start doing that twice a year now. C is basically to bring all of our budget receipts and estimate expenditures in line with how we spent for the actual year, so it's kind of final year-end stuff here to clean up. Temporary appropriations, so we start spending, or Casey can start spending after July 1st. One statement of purpose, last day of purpose of foot and calendar year.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that's approved, we'll move on to superintendent's items.
So I just wanted to share two happy and positive things with everything going on this week of the budget, looking for some positivity. First, Safety Town is going fabulous, Adrian did a phenomenal job. Tan and I were out there today, super cute, it's hilarious to see the kids breaking the laws with the policeman right there, on the stop signs and the lights, that was entertaining. But they also, Ryan Brown and his department were out there yesterday, we were able to utilize the rest of our safety grant money this year for a new Buster, I don't know if you've seen Buster?
I saw it, it's adorable.
Buster the mini school bus?
No.
There will be a video coming out, but he also travels Safety Town, and he has his own little stop sign that comes out, and he squirts water, and he's super cute, and the kids laugh really funny, and Dan's daughters are at Safety Town, and he videotaped the one, and she said Buster was her new friend.
Buster could be the mascot.
So much great things going on, not just that, I mean, and they're learning about all sorts of safety and all the different agencies that Adrian has connected with that are coming each day for those kids, so it's a really awesome thing for the district. And then the other great thing that just happened, I don't know if any of you were able to catch, was the production of Finding Nemo they put on. I have no idea how in one week they put on that production, it was fabulous, and the kids were adorable, and it was really, really well-done. I mean, I don't know how they did that in one week with the backgrounds and costumes and, so anyways, those are two really great things going on with our summer camps, among all the other awesome camps, too, that are happening, those are just two new highlights. And that is all I have tonight.
Great. Any questions?
I have a quick question, the solar panel project, is that moving along?
It is moving along, yep.
It's on both sides of the road now, I guess.
Yeah, it is. We won't see any funding from that until.
27, I think it did.
Yeah, 26, 27, school year.
I just wonder, it doesn't seem to be making much progress.
It does seem slow-moving, doesn't it? But at least there's something they've started. So, yeah, it is, it is moving.
Yeah.